I would like to call the order of the Kaiser City Council and work session. It is Monday, December 9th, 2024, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counselor.
Here.
Counselor Christopher.
Here.
Counselor Kohler.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Council President Starr.
Here.
Counselor Duran.
Here.
Counselor Cross.
Here.
And joining us tonight is Counselor-elect Marlene Parsons. So, thank you. So, this work session is being held as a handoff. It's talked about in our council rules and procedures where at the end of a biennium, we look at our council goals that we set almost two years ago and invite incoming city council members to sit in so they can get a ramp up on what we've been working on and be able to ask questions about that work as we prepare to go into the next biennium and the goal setting that will begin in January of 2025. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council and Counselor-elect Parsons. So, I'll just be going through the short and long-term goals, the ones that are at the very back of the room, but they're also on the slide deck in front of you. So, go over the short-term ones, then the long-term ones, and then welcome any comments and discussion. Don't feel like you have to wait for questions or comments until the end. Ask them as we go along if you want. And all the staff is here to answer any questions about that may be specific to things that they've worked on.
Just before we go a lot farther, since we set these goals two years ago, we've had quite a turnover in our department head staff. I'm not looking at Bill Lawyer, who is still here, but two years ago, our police chief was John Teague, and now Andrew Hopland. So, Bill Lawyer and Shane Witham were here two years ago. Two years ago, our city attorney was Shannon Johnson. Now, we have Joseph Lindsay. Two years ago, and actually just a couple of months ago, our human resources director was Michelle DePina, and now we welcome Garrett Cleaver. And two years ago, our city recorder was Tracy Davis, and now Ms. Melissa Biset. So, I think it's important to note that during this biennium, we have had a tremendous turnover in our executive leadership team and acknowledge the hard work and the expertise of those who have gone before and those who we've been lucky to hire into these positions. I think it's made our city the continuity and the handoff between all of the departments has been very strong, and I want to express our appreciation to the work you've done to make sure that we keep on delivering for the people of Kaiser during these transitions. So, with that.
Thank you, and we are blessed with extraordinary people to fill extraordinary holes. I won't go through them on this list here because they're in front of you, they're behind you, and we'll go through them one at a time, but for anybody that's there, for anybody at home. So, the first one was, we wanted some discussion of next steps on the urban growth boundary and specifically looking at transportation, education, and let's see, the last one, employment areas, areas of employment. I should have stayed on that first slide. But, so, here's what's happened over the last two years on this issue. We had a couple of conversations with Department of Land Conservation Development and specifically with the planner that gave us a 2019 opinion where Mr., I remember his last name, Gordon Howard. And that 2019 opinion had said that if the foresters, four jurisdictions got together and agreed that they wanted to separate the urban growth boundary, then that's a way that could happen. Our meeting with him was was less clear, and he added the stipulation that, well, DLCD would have to approve it also. So, that was new information. But, we did try to get, start at the staff level and get Polk County, Marion County, City of Salem, and Kaiser staff together to discuss it, and there was more, I don't want to say objection to it, but more discussion about it than I expected to get. I didn't frankly know why Polk County would care that much, but, and Salem and Marion, but, you know, there was, there were some pretty strong opinions in that meeting, enough to leave me to believe that it might be, is not a slam door, it's just getting the elected bodies together to agree and make it happen. But, it was, it was a very good meeting. I learned a lot because I was pretty new in that period, and the folks that were there at the meeting had been there for some time, asked a lot of good questions, a lot of good questions that I think frame us for talking with our community about and for you to talk to each other about what are we trying to accomplish? What is it that we want to look, how much control do you want over it? Whether we want to do some type of land swap or do the true divorce separation from the Salem-Kaiser urban growth boundary? All things, good things to think about going forward. So, it was, I think it was a productive meeting with the, with the staff from each agency. Then, we held a work session with, with you all on requirements, barriers, and avenues and impacts on housing, employment, and transportation. And it is a very complex issue, and I think most of you at the DIAS appreciate how complex it is and whether the complexity is going to be big, no matter which route we go, whether if it's a separation or if it's trying to do some type of land swap, or the other third option would be to just maintain what we currently have as in the boundaries. So, the way we ended that presentation was that we needed more public engagement around, especially around these areas of, during the strategic plan input sessions, we got this feedback of we, we like, we want to make that small, keep that small-town feel, but we also want to grow, and so what's the happy medium between those two ideals? And what, what is it that we want to accomplish? There's, Kaiser's always been a one school, one high school town, and is that still realistic? Will that be realistic if we want to grow? So, these, again, are just questions that would be great to engage the community and ultimately, things that you will have to deliberate on at the appropriate time. So, the council directed us at that time to, beginning in the new year, to have some town hall meetings, and so I think it's incumbent on the staff to put something together that gives enough information for them to chew on and give us some information to work with, give you some information to work with. So, that's where we left the UGB discussion.
Any questions on that one? Okay. Counselor Kohler, I felt a disturbance in the floors.
So, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Brown, as you met with the people that you felt had the say in Salem, Marion County, and Polk County, who did you feel the most resistance from?
Ooh, that's a good one. You know, I don't know if there's resistance, resistance as much, I mean, Salem, at the first point, they were like, oh, we don't really care, but don't, you know, expect us to put a lot of effort into it. But, by the end of the discussion, they were, they've kind of changed the tone, realized like, we are connected together at the hip, and we can't do something without the other one because of this connection of the UGB. So, kind of by the end of the discussion, they kind of turned around and said, okay, yeah, well, we'll work with you. And they had said that within six years, and this was probably about a year ago, six years, they would have to do a new housing needs analysis because they were chewing through their 20-year housing reserve. And the one thing that came out of that, that I shared back then, was that they were willing to do a, something more than a handshake agreement, but probably not more binding than a handshake agreement, an agreement that when Salem did their housing needs analysis, that they would consider expansions in Kaiser's growth boundary also, not just on the Salem side. The buzzsaw that we'll run into is when we have to go through DLCD and we look at which lands are protected for farmland or forest land, and our land to the north is, is really good land, as we showed in the, if you want to go back and check the presentation we gave in the work session, the county has those ran, those lands identified that are prime farmland. So, that's, that's why it's nothing simple. So, that, that was kind of Salem. Polk County, they were more of kind of like, just, hey, beware, because this, you know, if you want to go the divorce route, it'll take you 10 years to figure out all the zoning ultimately. And, and I'm not sure that's a bad thing, that it would take so long to figure it out because that, that means it's going to be very deliberate and engaging, at least I would hope it would mean those things. And if it's, if certainly if we went the splitting route, we would want it to be very intentional and very purposeful, so. But that 10 years comes from, I believe, the Eugene-Springfield example, where it took them about 10 years to finalize the new zoning in the new urban growth boundaries. So, and then Marion County's response was, the, from the staff, is that they didn't want to touch anything if it was going to be real controversial. They really wanted some solid buy-in from everybody. They didn't want to be a decision-maker in it. So, not necessarily objections, but it was very helpful because former city manager, now Deputy County Administrator for Marion County, Chris Epley, was very informative in all the history that preceded me, and, and he knew a lot of the, the issues and kind of what past city councils had wanted. He said, you know, they were basically looking, the past city councils had been looking just for 100, 150 acres, and when Salem heard that, they were, they were like, oh, well, that's, that's not much, we'll, we'll just swap with you. So, you know, if it was that easy, that, you know, could be a possible route. So, it was, like I said, it was a very helpful discussion. That's kind of where the three groups came back.
Follow-up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, you were meeting with employees of each of those entities, but the decision-makers really are the council and the commissioners.
Yep.
Is that correct?
Yep. Yeah, we're just trying to get a feel before we went with the governing bodies.
And then, just the last, last part is, as we've, we've looked at the high school, we have a number of people that live in Salem that are attending that high school. If the boundaries were changed, we probably could continue with the one high school. Is that a correct assumption?
You know, that's something we'd have to engage the school district with. I mean, and I would think the, the kids already going to high schools that are north of us, bringing them into the city boundaries, does that mean that they would have to change? Maybe, maybe they don't want to change either, the ones being annexed into Kaiser. So, maybe at that point, it's not about identity for groups of lands north of us that historically had gone to service, so.
Lots of food for thought. Thank you very much.
Another goal was simplification of our procurement policies, and the council wrapped that up on July 1st. You know, no coincidence there with Independence Day, but certainly gives, gave us a little more independence. But Resolution 2024-3482 and Ordinance 877 were, helped us a lot with that. Implementation of a citywide camera system. We actually, through grants, through different bidding and working with different contractors and, and sometimes swapping contractors, we were able to, we're able to bring these three programs in at around the original budget and, which is nice. Took long, longer than we expected, but all our park cameras, I believe, are installed now. I talked with our IT gentleman, there's a firmware that, that needs updated on five, five of them, but they think they're, they're all accessible. They're still working on some of the fiber connections for the license plate readers, but some of the LPRs are up and running right now. And the body grant camera, we told you early summer that we could have gone forward with the body cameras, but they applied for a grant and wanted to wait to see that, to see if we'd save money. The Kaiser Police Department got the grant for $38,000, and so, Monday, next week from today, we should be able to move forward with your permission with the body cameras. So, bring us into a 21st century city.
Questions on these two? Counsel President Starr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What will be the time from when that grant is approved to when all of the body cameras will be fully deployed and functioning?
I don't know the right answer to that. It's somewhere between probably a month and two months, just because the, the vendor's going to have to come do some installations, and then we want to do some installations in the cars, so it's an automatic switch. When the lights turn on, the body cam turns on, so we'll probably have to be waiting in line somewhere to get those installed, but shouldn't be too long. I can update you, as soon as we lock in the contract with the vendor, they'll give us a timeframe.
Just curious, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that gets a good kind of a block to look at. Yeah, Lieutenant Hind gave us a really good update Friday about the body cameras.
Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I understand that there's a possibility we might be looking at storing the data on, on the cloud rather than on servers here so that it's easier to access other departments and things, too. Is that something that is part of the discussion?
Yes. I think for the LPRs, I think the discussion still is over at Salem, but as far as the park cameras, I think with our transmigration to Microsoft 365 on the cloud, our emails, that's what our IT department is looking at, what, what works best for us.
All right. Well done. Thank you for seeing all these through, really appreciate it.
Yeah, and I would be remiss if I didn't say this is a lot of partnership with Public Works and the police guys, Kaiser Police Department, and finance and, and IT, and all of us working together to make it happen. So, this was a very exciting day, and I thought I'd play the video since it's pretty short, and it was really well done for, let's see.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is time to start our ceremony to get this place open for everyone to play. So, it's not every day that we get to cut a ribbon on the $4 million facility for our kids. This is a rare opportunity where everything aligned for us to be able to do a project just like this. Y'all ready? Let's count it down in three, two, one.
Nicely done.
Yes, they did, they did a really good job on that, and boy, I tell you, I think everybody agrees that was, you know, one of the best days of, of being a part of the city of Kaiser. Those are types of things you, you put up with 95% of the unfun stuff so that you can have days like that. You know, it was a great job and well done. And I made a commitment that day that I was not going to play rugby against those ladies because they looked scary on that field, so. They looked a lot tougher than me. Codification. Wow, this is a huge magnitude of a project. And so, we will have the first draft go live at the beginning, well, I think it's scheduled this year, but shortly after that, if, we're going to, just this kind of a warning, we're going to have a lot of cleanup to do, and we're going to, we don't know exactly what it is until we run into it, and we're going to like, oh, wait, that's not, that's not right. So, the next probably two, three years, there'll, there'll be some cleanup, so I just want everybody to be prepared for that. I know Joe's been warning me and Tammy that it's, you know, we're taking 42 years of ordinances and trying to put that into a single code is, is quite a big deal. So, and I have to tell you also that, man, I think Shannon got us a great deal on that prize considering all the work that was done for it. He, yeah, we got a great deal on, on that work, so.
Shannon and his legal assistant, Tammy Harms, have done a magnificent job doing this with primitive tools, if you will, to try to keep things as consistent as possible. So, I want to give them a huge shout-out, and I wish we had done this for them a lot sooner. It's here now, and so everybody buckle up. We're going to be doing some nuts and bolts work over the next couple of three years, but, you know, it's incumbent on us to go ahead and get this completely done for the people of Kaiser. So, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Lindsay, for the smooth handoff from Mr. Johnson and keeping us on track so we can get this stuff done.
Certainly, and you'll be seeing it a week from today.
Yahoo.
Mr. Lindsay has done, put a lot of work into this, too. It was a, a big handoff from Mr. Johnson to Mr. Lindsay, and they both put a lot of, a lot of sweat and blood into it.
A lot of work yet to come. All right, thank you. Done.
Also, agenda management system fully implemented. Hopefully, we'll, our new counselors will get trained on how to use that, and it's, it's done really great things for staff as far as having a better workflow than we had in place before and making sure the right people are seeing the right things before it gets to the, on the council agenda. So, it's been a great improvement for staff, but I also think it's a great platform for the public also to access our content and now to be able to just go open up a meeting and click on an agenda item and for the video to pop right up there so you can watch just that segment. You don't have to try to figure out where in the meeting they started that conversation. It's really great.
So, I also want to add that one of the things that we re-instituted, reinstituted was the agenda meetings with the mayor, council president, and then a rotating council member. So, this is something that was done years, many years ago, but then we switched dates on when the agenda was published, but didn't change the date of the agenda management meeting. So, it was kind of cart after the horse or before whatever, the cart and horse were mixed up. So, by reinstituting those meetings as well, it's really involved everybody in a better understanding of how our agendas are put together, talked through, is this ready for prime time, that sort of thing, not deliberating, of course, but the kind of questions we want to make sure and the materials that we want to make sure are available for this council and for the public for greater transparency. So, I think that's been a great add on top of this, that we've been able to get a value-added. So, for incoming counselors, you're going to see a schedule for the agenda management meetings, and then if you can't make it, you know, swap, the old system of find somebody who can. I understand Counselor Christopher will be coming tomorrow for Counselor Cross, so it's a great opportunity for really understanding how this works and hadn't been done. So, thank you for helping us reinstitute that.
Yes, absolutely. It's, it's time well spent.
Yeah.
So, our HRS payroll, Human Resource Information System, People Guru is going live in December, the first module of it, which is the payroll, and then additional program features will be rolling out over the next four or five months. So, it, it is a robust system. Most of us have got it on our computers and on our devices, too, and we'll, again, another process is some improvement on the workflow and getting away from paper workflows to digital workflows. So, we hope it'll be more efficient for our supervisors and, and most importantly, our Human Resources Department, which has been tracking things on spreadsheets for a long time, and now there'll be all those things moving over to a database much more efficient.
That is, again, an awesome addition, a huge leap forward for the city staff and putting the proper tools in place for Mr. Cleaver and your huge department of two to give the maximum value, so thank you for that. Any questions on the People Guru rollout? Okay.
I, I got a feel for the level of complexity last week when I attended one of the trainings for time seat approvals and just looking at the system a little more in-depth and with this team, folks that have been implementing it, with Garrett and Kristen, Michelle, Tim, and there's people I'm missing, but Stephanie and Arcilia, yeah. It's, it's a huge project, and they've done an amazing job. Okay, social media policy. This is something was on the goal, as a short-term goal. We prepared a policy, a draft policy, and reviewed it with city council back in March, and the city council didn't want to move forward with that social media policy at that time, so we put that to rest, unless anybody wants us to bring it back up, so. And our emergency operations plan. We made some edits really early after I got here, and we're kind of proceeding towards adoption of those, and then Marion County went out and got some grants to help provide professional assistance to the staffs of all the cities within Marion County, and so we've been in the holding pattern for that. We are, they exhausted their first year's funding, but they got refunded, and we are supposed to be number two in this next year's funding, I think right by Woodburn. So, we'll take the edits that we've made, use the professional, professional consulting help to add to that. What we did in the interim is the council changed the, made amendments to the review committee because it was comprised of some organizations that don't exist anymore in the community. the community, like EVAC, or, you know, organizations that had just gone by the wayside and ones that had come in that are filling other roles that we wanted to add to it. So Counselor, Council President Starr was added to that committee. So once we get through the professional consulting and we'll pull that body back together and be able to finalize those edits. I asked the county emergency managers, should we adopt the amendments that we've made? And their response was, it's, you know, not a big deal. The stuff we made is really about people and clerical edits and stuff like that. So they, they said, as long as you know what you're doing, you're, you're fine. So, so we'll wait for the professionals to give us some conduct. In the meantime, we, I can say with honesty and to my knowledge, our preparedness level is higher than it's been in 10 years. We've consistently been having emergency management meetings. We've had great partnerships with our community organizations, the fire department, Marion County Emergency Management, chariots, Salem County School District, Chomeka Emergency Management. They have been so supportive of us, and we've also participated with Marion County and their local planning group that meets quarterly. So we're in a good spot. The last really big step we did was open up our closets and look at the materials in there as a team. And it was kind of a fun day, but also kind of sobering, too, finding phone books in each tote and old flashlights and CB radio. And yeah, there was some, there was some fun stuff there. So we're, kind of the next step is working on our physical preparedness. We've got the books in order. We have processed down. Our training is up. Everybody's either at or almost at the right training level, and so we'll just, we just need to make our physical space ready to do so to operating under an emergency.
Any questions on this one? Sounds like you unearthed a time capsule.
Mm-hmm.
Counselor-elect Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So once this all gets put together and finalized, will the public be able to then, what is the public going to see? This is what I want to know. What is the public going to see?
Well, it has to be adopted by the City Council. So generally, we don't put out our emergency plans on the internet for people to look at all the time, but at one point, when it's approved, it's going to have to be out there. And I don't think it's, I think it is subject to public disclosure anyway, so let's go for it.
Depends on which parts of it.
So some or all of it may be protected, but, yeah.
Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm remembering that all the training that we went through FEMA and so forth in order to be eligible for those funds and so forth, is that baked into this plan? Because there was a lot of really complicated policies and procedures and so forth. Is this based on that, or is, are those elements taken into consideration? What role does that process play in this?
Good question. The council has to have a certain level of training, and I believe it is, I don't even know if they do 100 anymore, but 200, 700, and 800 is the level that the council members will have to take. And it's as early as you can as you take office, if you haven't had them.
And follow up on, oh, did you want to follow up on that?
Yeah, just follow up.
Okay, follow up.
Just, is that something that we have in our counselor onboarding training? Just to make sure that people, and is it something that you only have to do once? I would hope that it would be something that you'd have to at least review every once in a while, because that was a lot of information.
Yeah, it is. They have started, so most of this, the Incident Command System came out as far as public emergency management after 9/11. And so we have just passed this 20-year mark of it being out there. And just recently, they've said, if you wanted to take this 419 class that I took this past year, then they wanted you to take the updated version, 100, 200. So if you've had it within the last 10 years, you're probably fine, but if it was before 10 years, you'd probably have to retake those, those ones.
So do they have any kind of materials that are just sort of refresher bullet points or something like that, so you don't have to go through the whole? I mean, is that available, or is this sort of the federal government jumped through all of our hoops?
No, it's available because you can even download the packets while you're taking the training, which I've always done, and I have most of them actually. So you, and of course, the information's all free, so you can just log into FEMA's website and download it all, too. So it's very publicly accessible.
Thank you.
It's something we can provide to anybody on the dice if you want.
So Counselor-elect Parsons is remembering the training. Counselor Christopher, I think you have done this as well, but it's been more than 10 years.
Yeah, she should. She has to log in.
Oh, now, now. But I think it's part of our onboarding. Let's have a.
Yeah.
Well, we had a good time in, as much as we can, because we did it jointly with the Detroit City Council. It was after their, after the fire and so forth, so we actually had both city councils here and did an update with a couple of, actually three, two former fire chiefs and one former trainer from Chomeka that are all right here in Kaiser. So that was kind of nice to have some ringers to walk us through it. So let's talk about what we would like to do for our onboarding in January, February, if we want to do a review, and make sure that everybody's got that certification and all up to date. So it's not a bad idea.
The nice thing that they've done since the, you know, 20 years, it was, of course, 100 and 200 was the same for everybody, but it's gotten more specific now. So you'll be able to take the 100, 200 for policymakers.
Oh, thank goodness.
And it's, so they've zoned in, lasered in on the roles. So the underlying framework is the same of the Incident Command System hasn't changed, but that is a nice thing that they've done as they've refined those presentations.
I think we did 100 and 700, if I remember correctly. But I'd have to go back. I know I've got my certificates somewhere. But I know Ms. Bissett has them electronically because Ms. Davis and Ms. Lockhart were really good at making sure they kept track of all of our stuff for us.
And Human Resources tracks it, too. And then also Lana Bremer-Kowalski in our, who helps me with the emergency management, maintains that database of training. And we have to report that to the county every year of, if we're trained up, so.
Okay. Any other questions on our emergency operations plan? This was, this was another huge leap forward that we needed to do, so thank you to the entire team for really leaning in on this and getting it up to date. Appreciate it.
Yeah, Chief Teague wrapped up a long revamp of it in 2009, and he was in really good shape when he kind of left there for Dallas, left here for Dallas. But that was kind of last update, so we're in a good place now.
Good deal.
Okay, the Kaiser Community Center policies and practices, the council approved some revisions.
We got one more question. Counselor Kohler.
On the emergency management plan, are we still looking at using the corner of the building down here, or are we looking at something else?
The community Kaiser Event Center ballroom, what is, what is that far room? I can't ever remember the rooms.
A.
I would say is the Emergency Operations Center. And it's connected, wired, our closets right off the side is where we have our ham radio and the bins that we've recently dusted off. So yeah, that's still the primary EOC.
Okay. Anything else on the emergency operation plan? Okay.
So the council helped us win over some revisions with the Community Event Center, updated some documents. We are ordering new chairs, and the AV has been the one that's, the audiovisual one there's been the challenging one. We had six different AV companies and all across Portland to Salem, including the big one names that some of you know. And it was a little perplexing there. Most of, all of them basically said there's really nothing else to do that's, it's fine, even though some of you have experienced that different than that.
Counselor President Starr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Did you have them come in during an event? Because I could go in there when nobody's in there, and it's fine, the sound is fine. But it's a very different experience when there's an event going on. So I think, did any of those six assessments happen during an event?
I don't think so. Go ahead.
Several of the consultants that did come in have been here during the big events. So again, we're kind of perplexed when they've, they've been here doing work as part of events and haven't had any issues.
When we see, can we talk about what those issues are? Because the sound is just super muffled, and it's hard to hear and understand clearly. I don't think I see, yeah, garbled. Counselor Christopher's nodding her head. I know we've been at events, and it's just not a high-quality sound. So I'm confused why they would say nothing's wrong.
I would concur with you.
I'm going to go to Counselor Cross and then to Counselor Christopher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, a couple of things. I would love to see the reports on what they actually said from what companies. I would always suggest that we support local, so let's, we have enough qualified AV people in town, and there is no doubt that we have problem with our AV. And we need to get that done, because this short-term goal has been going on for the last two years, so now it's a long-term goal.
Yeah, we don't disagree with you because, you know, I've been at events, and right afterwards, y'all come up to me and said, we didn't hear anything at the spot we were at, you know, and then ask somebody else, they're, oh, yeah, it was fine. So there was dead spots for sure, but it's challenging. Yeah, we have, we have a summary of all those comments, and they're from Allied, I don't remember the names of one, the local, the local ones that we use, too, but I'll forward them to you.
Follow up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I would say that I could get the two owners from Allied Video in here, and they would probably, I would love if you need me to connect those dots. I'd love to have them in here, because we can do better, in my opinion, from a person that goes to a lot of events.
Yeah, we'll gladly accept your expertise and connections, so.
All right, thank you. Counselor Christopher.
Thank you. And from a person who's drug to a lot of events with Counselor Cross, you know, they, the communication misunderstanding might have been, it's working exactly as it's supposed to work. It may be an entire new system is needed, because Counselor, Council President Starr is exactly right. It is so garbled that you can't understand what they're saying, and that's not true of other places. So I don't know what, I don't know what's wrong, but there's something wrong.
Yeah, it's, it's challenged for us when we bring in experts, and then they, you know, we hear all the complaints from you, and we bring in the experts, and they say, well, you don't need to do anything. Well, we, something's not working because we, it's, you know, consistent complaint that we get, but. On the other hand, I've had other people that have used the facility, and they said, it's great. In fact, I've drawn, I said, what about the mic system? Did you, did you have any problems with that? And they, no, we didn't have any problems with it, but, so, you know, I can't discount what anybody's saying, but it should be great if we could get a professional to come in here and said, here's your problem, and this is what you need to do to fix it.
Counselor Kohler.
Well, even when we just had our, our public, public meeting rules, meeting in A, and there were problems then, and, yeah, and that, that was a pretty small meeting in comparison to some of the meetings are there. And if we, if it's not working in that kind of meeting, there's got to be bigger problems. That's.
Well, if I remember correctly, too, that, and I don't know if people who are doing events aren't instructed on different microphones fighting with each other, because as soon as they got two microphones close to each other, they started fighting. So maybe we need something that's going to help the users of the system understand what they're supposed to use and when. Because if you get two different ones going, then you get the feedback, and bad things happen, and blows our eardrums.
I just know it was embarrassing.
Well, and it was, it was a challenge. Once they turned off the other external microphones, the internal ones are working fine. And Counselor President Starr, and then I'll go back to Counselor Cross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In regards, I noticed we talked about the new chairs are expected soon, but I thought we were going to do things like a drop, like dropdown screens, we were going to do microphones or like podiums with installed microphones or something, so we didn't have them falling off during like the State of the City address or, you know, things like that. So where are we at on kind of just upgrading and elevating the extras, if you will, that would be appropriate for events and conferences and so forth?
Sure, good question. Right now, we're dealing with light issues. We're going to have to probably go and replace all of the light fixtures in the event center and throughout the entire city hall buildings. Yeah, there's some issues, I guess, if they don't make the same kind of light bulbs. I think that's a change out. But anyway, that's, that's, we didn't want to do anything moving stuff around till we figure out what that issue is about. So we've gone out and procured all the light bulbs that we possibly could throughout the state. So we have a little bit of a cushion to deal with this problem, but that'll be a subject we're going to have to work through the next budget process with. So that's been kind of limiting us as far as doing that, because we're going to have to move some of that stuff around to put in the dropdown screens if, when we get to that point. So that's kind of where we're at at this point. We're also waiting for the maintenance group to make sure that the ceilings are strong enough to be able to support the dropdown screens as well. So that's, those are, that's kind of where we're at with those, too.
Follow up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When did we learn about the light issue? And then make sure we add like ceiling-mounted projectors to that, so we don't have to worry about putting them on a table. That's frustrating.
Okay.
But yeah, when did we learn about that light issue? Because that's the first I've heard about it, I think.
I learned about it about maybe two months ago.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Christopher, then Counselor Kohler.
And then I think Counselor Cross.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did, yep, sorry.
It was her.
Okay, I was going to Counselor Cross, then Counselor Christopher. So yes, thanks for reminding me.
Okay, a couple of things. Sorry, I'm going reverse order, two questions. So who's doing the lighting? I've seen Cherry City Electric here. Don't we have a maintenance person? Is a maintenance person doing it, or is it Cherry City Electric? Because I know how expensive they are.
I don't know the vendor offhand, but no, our, our maintenance person won't be doing the light fixtures. That requires a certified electrician.
Okay, that was my first question. And then my, so just so I understand this, we were doing all the AV going on 24 months, but now we've pushed the AV to the side because we have to do lights? Is that correct?
No, we've been working on the AV. If we could get someone to tell us what. If we could get someone to tell us what to do, we would move forward with something.
So, but when was the last time you asked us what to do?
I guess I don't understand your question.
Well, I mean, I just wonder what the timeline is for the AV now because it seems like we're waiting a long time. So, now in January, we have the First Citizen. And I feel like every time we talk about it and we say as a group that it's been approved in the budget and we don't do it, that, how do we get this done?
So, I guess in response to the First Citizen, we're doing what the Convention Center downtown Salem is doing. We're basically outsourcing the audiovisual. So, that's, that's kind of the recommendation at this point.
Okay, and I would encourage that we, maybe we need a little bit more education with our event center staff. So, when they're asking for things, that we're asking for the right things, like Mayor Clark just said, that we're educating because maybe we are having those cross problems. So, I would just encourage a little bit more pushback from our side in saying this needs to be done. Thank you.
Counselor Christopher, oh, go ahead.
Share those, those notes from the outside vendors on it.
So, can we work, or have you worked with Oregon Energy Trust on those lights? Because that is the identical situation that happened at the Cultural Center. Those were 25-year-old lights. They were, they had become obsolete. So, some of the lights were able to be replaced through Oregon Energy Trust and that was at no cost to the Cultural Center. But some we had to buy because they couldn't be replaced because they were obsolete fixtures. And so, y'all helped us do that. That was the like $2,400 that, and, and I would just say, lights before audiovisual, yeah. It's safety. And it was, I mean, it, it was so significant in the Cultural Center. I can't emphasize enough what a difference that made. In addition to that, the vast array of vendors that the energy trust uses that have already been vetted by them, and they're all local. All of our, all of the vendors that we used for the energy upgrades at the Cultural Center were all local businesses. But they've been vetted and the state of Oregon stands behind it, which always gives you a little bit, you know, that's a pretty big stick to have behind them if they should make an error. So, is, have we done that? Are we working with?
Yes, I do believe that the contractor that came out was, one of the energy folks directed us their direction. So, yes.
Great. Okay. Well, I'm, I'm in for lights.
Mr. Lawyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for clarity, we have reached out to Energy Trust of Oregon to give us an evaluation of the entire facility for lighting because this building is now 15 years old. And when this building was built, compact CFLs, compact fluorescent lights were all the rage. They're now banned.
That's us.
They don't make them anymore. We have bought up the supplies we can to keep us operating without having to update all the fixtures in the building. I don't know that we've received a report back from Energy Trust yet. The challenge with Energy Trust is we don't see a lot of energy savings between LEDs and compact fluorescents. And so, the incentives are not as good as they were when you were going from incandescent to fluorescence. So, I, I know Dan has been working with them and they've looked at the entire facility. I don't think we've received back their report or any incentive programs available to us yet. But this does affect the entire facility, not just the event center, police department, city hall, everything, council chambers. So, we're looking at this holistically and trying to put together a plan on, how long is the stock we have gonna last? Where is it gonna fit and what needs to be replaced first? So, when I have some answers, I'll share those.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Counselor Cross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess now that I'm thinking about it, it would be nice if we knew some of those things because then when we're talking to people, maybe they're saying stuff about audio then we can share with the community, "Wow, you know, we really are working on audio, but right now, woo, we're 15 years old." So, I think if we can be those rah-rah cheerleaders, it's a lot easier for us being out there in the community than playing pickup.
Very good. Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Integrate the strategic plan into the budget. We, the, went through a process with council, with the community. The council last December, year ago, said, "Hey, push it out to all the committees." And that went through about seven or eight months of, some of the committees hit it real quick, some of them worked on it a lot. So, we have a ton of comments and feedback from our committees over this past year to go with the comments from the previous public engagement. And looking forward to working with the council on developing a plan to go forward and work on a strategic plan in 2025.
Questions? Counselor Christopher.
Just a comment. I would, I have a great deal of interest in this, as you're aware. And I would really like to, I don't even know where we go with this. I would really like to work, or I would like to see maybe a ad hoc task force of maybe three counselors working with Adam to talk about where we go from here and then get together a next phase draft and bring it to a work session. It needs work.
Yeah, and we've got literally thousands of more data points from all that committee feedback.
I, I think that, I, I just don't think the council, if we could, if we could narrow that down and, you know, like, like I said, if we could get an ad hoc task force to wade through some of that and then present that to the council, then let the council weigh in and say, "Okay, where do you want to go from here?" And, I mean, I think that's a, strategic plans are painful. They are. This one is particularly painful. So, if, if the, you know, if that's something the council could contemplate and mayor, I'd sure like to be a part of that.
So, I think, let's put a pin in that one for our goal setting to talk about how we want to approach that and also, you know, the steps through work group, work sessions, you know, those community, community conversations as we go through this process and refine it. Again, this is something that, there was a strategic plan done in '02, I believe.
I think there was one after that, '09, maybe?
'09, that was the Kaiser Compass as part of our land use planning update.
But it was bigger than that, but...
So, yeah. So, again, this is another large step forward. So, it's an opportunity for us to create the process and, you know, take our time with it to think it through. So, look forward to that. Okay. Counselor Cross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I know that we're really lean and mean. How many dollars have we spent so far on the strategic plan with our consultant and whatnot?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
Thirty, forty?
We haven't spent, maybe thirty, probably between thirty and forty. We haven't spent really anything this year.
No, but all, just saying from the beginning of time with this particular strategic plan, how much have we spent? Rough figure?
Yeah, it's somewhere between thirty and forty.
Okay. So, there is a lot of things we want to do in Kaiser. So, I'm along with anything that doesn't cost money at this point. So, I understand we're gonna put a point on it, a pin in it, but I just really want that out there. That's a lot of money. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think we can do it in-house with, with, maybe using some tools, online tools. But I think we can do it in-house, the rest of it, we can finish it off.
I think we've got, we'll take the information we have. We've got a lot of data. We went back out. And thank you to Ms. Brown, Mr. Wood for helping us get additional information. So, we'll be able to have that more robust next iteration of the conversation and find a way to take this data and do something with it. Also, something that we used to do was the community surveys. A lot of things went by the wayside or got sidetracked during the delightful COVID period. So, it's part of us being able to work on what does that look like once we've done this going forward?
Yeah, and that's, if there's one recommendation I would have to spend money on, it would be a regular community survey that's consistent, asking the same questions over a period of time so you get a longitudinal data. And I previously used the National Citizen Survey. They were bought by Polco and the price went up significantly. But I did hear some other cities in our conversations with other, other city managers that found another tool that was a little bit more affordable. So, exploring that.
Yeah, I like it. Okay. So, again, let's, these are some great ideas that we can bring forward in our, our goal setting. Talk about what we want to do in, in the next two years. And then over the longer period from that, going back to the regularly scheduled community surveys for that longitudinal data. So, okay.
Okay, so, moving on to our long-term goals. We had six identified ones, some overlap with the short-term goals. We didn't make any progress on a sidewalk gap and repair program. There is, the transportation system plan may inform that, which is set back by the economic opportunities analysis and the housing needs analysis and the climate-friendly equitable communities task force. These things are all kind of tied together. Looks like Mr. Witten wants to say something.
Sure, I do, I mean, I just add, I know, Counsel, I've kind of given you updates as we've gone. We are on the shortlist. Staff has been working with ODOT staff. And I do expect that we will embark on a TSP update in this next calendar year. There's been some initial scopes and statements of services. They're basically, they're doing it through TGM grants, Transportation Growth Management Grants has historically been how cities update their transportation systems plans, unless you just self-fund it to the tune of several hundred thousand dollars. So, with the climate-friendly equitable communities rules that have rolled through, it kind of, I would say, a giant silver lining is it put Kaiser and Salem, our region, in this kind of first run on getting funding, not through a competitive grant process, but rather you are all doing scenario planning so you get to update a TSP and we're gonna give you money. So, that, that is in the works. I don't have anything hard and fast, other than like staff has had meetings. They have put out a, it's not really an RFP to consultants, but it's kind of like a mini RFP to gauge interests of different consulting firms to help us with that. So, I will be reporting as I know more, but the TSP will be getting updated and we should be walking into that work real soon, like in 2025. Now, generally, TSPs can take like 18 months to two years to go through the whole process of doing the update. So, it will be an, an ongoing process, but I just wanted to offer that.
That's great news. And speaking of the climate-friendly equitable communities, CPEC for short. So, we are still in process with that scenario planning. Is that correct? And even though we lost the Supreme Court, so we still have to do it. So, where are, remind me where we're at now because we've only had like, we just scheduled something for January, I want to say?
Yeah, I think the second advisory committee. I, I believe, yeah, I think it's kind of its own long-term goal. So, maybe we, I don't know, I can talk about it now or we could pause and we could talk about it when we get to that spot, whatever people want to do. I'm looking to Mr. Brown, counsel.
Yeah, it's a couple of slides up, but...
Okay, so, we'll just hold on to that one till we get to that slide. Okay, preview of coming events.
I think ultimately what this one is about, though, is providing an incentive program to be able to fill sidewalks where they don't currently exist. And sidewalks that may not be curb gutter sidewalk. Some parts of our communities, we just have separated sidewalks without curb and gutter. So, getting a idea, a plan of what types we're looking for in each area of the community and what's priorities too. But I know one of my experiences taught me over the last 20 years that incentives work. And so, ultimately, when it comes down to if we want to get a, a plan and try to get places that don't have sidewalk, with sidewalk, creating a incentive plan.
Counsel President Starr.
Mr. Brown, do we have it anywhere in like a, I don't know if this is a staff work plan type of item or if it's a find an intern that's in a, you know, planning type major but, or public administration? Have we done an inventory on, like, do we have a city map of where we are missing side? That would be, I think that would be a great thing for us to see and for our community. I don't know where it's at. But I'm also acutely aware, after just about having done a face plant this morning, on some of the really rough shapes some of our sidewalks are in. So, I don't know if there's a way to inventory the sidewalks in the city that are in dire need of repair because at some point, it's gonna be about safety for people that are using the sidewalks. So, I, I mean, I'm just, it's, it's gonna be heartbreaking when somebody who's 85 is walking on the sidewalk and breaks a hip or both hips or a leg or some, so I'm just, I'm, I'm worried about that. And I'd like to understand where we are and what the date of that inventory was.
We do have an inventory that was done in coordination with the council of governments. It's available on our website. I'll find it and send you the link so you know where it's at. It's pretty accurate still because we haven't filled sidewalks in anywhere to speak of where they didn't exist then, okay? There's been a few infill sidewalks built with development, but there's been no city project to add sidewalks where they didn't exist previously, okay? So, it's still pretty accurate. In terms of sidewalk maintenance and an evaluation or an inventory of less than good sidewalks, that does not exist. That's a staffing issue.
So, intern?
Possibly. I hear your comment about an episode today. Get us an address.
Oh, Mr. Layer, there are so many.
Get them all. It's, it's addressed on a complaint basis. If we don't get complaints, we can't get them addressed. Now, now, I know this is difficult and you can write a novel for, I, I can do it in my neighborhood, okay? I don't do it because I have a bit of a problem putting the burden on the property owner, which is where the city ordinance lies.
I know, so maybe we can address that.
I have myself focused on the very worst of the worst, okay? And, and issued complaints myself. I know it's not a great program, but it's the best we have right now. So, if you see something that you believe needs to be fixed, just get us an address. We'll go through the process and we'll make it, get, make it happen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, thank you. I, I think it would be helpful, though, like if we could have some kind of an internal scale of one to five or scale of, you know, type of identifi, like, if, if I face plant, that's a five, right? But what I worry about, I think it's, it's a deeper issue, at least from what I've seen, in that it's the trees. And I am, I love trees. Trees are lovely and trees are important. But when I'm, when I've been out there, it's the tree roots that are causing the problems. And so, I think it's a deeper conversation, maybe for us to have about what that, you know, you mentioned it's by ordinance and, you know, all the things. But I think it's a big... But I think it's a bigger conversation than just sending in a complaint and then addressing it from the complaint process. I get that's what we have in place now, but I'm just not sure that's the answer that we need to continue to operate under.
Let me share this perspective with you. If we have an intern go out, a citizen go out, doesn't matter, a staff person go out and inventory sidewalks and identify problems, we are then bound to fix them. We are bound to notify them to property owners and bound to make them fix them, okay? That's going, excuse me, by ordinance.
By our ordinance.
By our ordinance.
That's what I'm saying, we need to talk about that.
Which has a half inch, if it's more than a half inch gap, it's a trip hazard. That trip hazard has to be solved. Now, there's various ways to solve those. In some instances, they can be grounded, have to replace the concrete. My point is, if we know about them, we have to follow through and make sure they get fixed or we, the city, become liable. We don't want that. So there's a balance here.
I think we're going to be liable anyway.
The legal department has advised me over the years, we are not liable if we are informed of a.
Anybody can sue anyone.
Excuse me, Madam, Council President, do I interrupt you? Thank you. The ordinance and the city attorney has told me for years, if we know about an issue with sidewalk and we follow our ordinance, we are not held liable. If we don't follow the ordinance, we are absolutely liable. Now, you're right. Anybody can sue anybody for anything and cities are wide-open targets for lawsuits. I take my knowledge from our former city attorney, who has protected the city for many, many years, and I trust what he says. If we follow the ordinance and the requirements of notifying a property owner, we are not liable, okay? That's the best information I have. Trees. City ordinance also says trees are the responsibility of the property owner to maintain, even if they're in the right of way. That's a huge burden on a property owner that has a tree that has caused a sidewalk problem. For decades, the Public Works Department's policy has been, if the tree causes the problem, we will take care of the tree. We will have it cut down, grind the stump and prep it for adding it for a tree replacement. Or if we can just grind roots and solve the problem, we do that. The city Public Works Department Street Fund takes care of that, because we recognize it's a burden on a property owner. They then are responsible for the concrete and a tree replacement. We have done that for decades and I promote and continue that policy. If we follow the ordinance, which we don't, it's all on the property owner. So I think we have tried, to the best of our ability, to be conscious and respectful of our residents, to alleviate these problems when we get a complaint. And if we don't follow up on them, the city becomes liable.
I'm just waiting to make sure you're done.
I am done.
Okay, so let's fix the ordinance.
What does that look like?
Pardon?
What does that look like, fixing the ordinance?
I don't know, but let's have a conversation about what that looks like. I mean, I.
This is a common ordinance, this is a common ordinance with many cities in the state, okay? And my experience and understanding says, it's either on the property owner or it's on the city. Where do you want the responsibility to be?
And the cost.
Okay? If you want it on the city, we'll take the responsibility. That's going to impact budgeting for other things in the street fund, like resurfacing streets. It's all a matter of priority. So it's, there's really no in-between as far as who's responsible. It's either going to be the property owner or the city. So if we're going to change the ordinance, we're going to make the city responsible. Is that what we want to do? And I don't know what the answer to that is. From a long-term street maintenance standpoint, that's going to end up in failing pavement citywide at some point. Because putting money in sidewalks is going to take away from paving, just like having to update ADA ramps when you resurface a street has taken a lot of money from paving, okay? That's something we have to do. There's no way around it. So it is a policy question. And it's a very big question for the council to decide which direction do you want to go. That's what I have to offer. And there's, again, there's really not, that I'm aware of, there's no other option here short of a grant program funded by the city for sidewalk repairs. But again, that takes money from the city. Something else I've thought about is a loan program, where the city can front the money, citizens pay us back. That's an ongoing pot of money that can be used over and over and over again, you know, something to think about, so.
Follow-up. You're complete. Counsel Cross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, just, I want to regroup on this. So, we would have to rewrite the ordinance and you're saying it would cost the city more money, okay? So I would just like to voice my opinion that the safety of the citizens of Kaiser is the most important thing to me. So if maybe we don't have a strategic plan or we dip into unanticipated expenses, I'm okay with that. And I'd love to have a work session on it.
Yeah, there's no, I understand the concern, but I was, and I've also had these conversations with Mr. Lawyer over the years, that we have the city sidewalks that we're responsible for, the ones in the neighborhoods, like, my neighborhood was built in 1960 and there's a lot of sidewalks that are in poor repair. There was one where I face planted, I turned in the city and the city made the property owner fix that part of the sidewalk. But a lot of them haven't been turned in on the local streets and they are the responsibility and the liability of the property owner. So if somebody does face plant, their homeowners insurance are now liable for that. Other cities, what they have done, when there is a huge backlog, and this could be taken up in our goal setting for next time, because that was part of the conversations I was hoping we'd be able to have at some point, is some cities have done a bond measure to pay specifically for sidewalk repairs throughout the city. So that's a cost borne by all of the property taxpayers in the city. That would have to be passed by the voters to relieve the responsibility of the property owner from repairing the sidewalk, which is their responsibility, while other property owners have taken care of it already themselves. So we've got, that would be a community-wide conversation, so we're going to put a pin in that for our goal-setting conversation.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Lawyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I may, you commented the city's responsible for sidewalks. The city is only responsible for sidewalks on city-owned property.
Exactly.
And you lawfully drive in Area D of Kaiser Station, and that is through an arrangement with the tribes for that roadway. All of the rest of the sidewalks, Cherry Avenue, River Road, doesn't matter where it's at, it's the property owner's responsibility. Just to make sure that's clear, that there are no cities, the city is not responsible for any sidewalks in the city except for city-owned property. Just for clarity.
Thank you, and I appreciate that clarification. We want to be really clear on that. All right.
Okay, so, assume that's going to stay on plan. So getting right where the conversation was going is the transportation system plan and the relationship that has to climate-friendly equitable communities, we're in the scenario planning. And, yeah. We had some questions at this point that we delayed. What were those?
I have to remember my question. It had to do with the CFEC scenario planning and we have a meeting coming up in January. And this is a joint exercise, Marion County, Polk County, City of Kaiser, City of Salem, for our scenario regional plan. Looking, Mr. Witham.
Yes. Yeah, so, yes, there's a slew of CFEC projects, one of which is the scenario planning project, which will kind of inform the transportation system plan update. There's been one advisory committee meeting last year. They did a public open house. It's been in, like, the technicians have been doing, well, they really are technicians, it's not a quotes, I guess. They've been doing modeling. So we do have, I just saw that email recently, I believe, the second of, I'm not sure how many advisory committee meetings off the top of my head, but the second advisory committee meeting, I think, is happening in January, where the consultant team is going to report out to that advisory committee. As I said, I think I got an email today on that. And I have a PM, a staff meeting with the consultants this week, actually, for them to share some of the information that they've done on the modeling. So that's continuing to move forward. It's, I think, the original timeframe, they thought maybe we'd be done by the first of this year, which we all laughed, like, yeah, right? So that's kind of, I don't know, I don't know how to, I don't know what to tell you on it, other than, yes, it's still being worked on. It will keep moving forward. Ultimately, the scenario plan that becomes a preferred scenario plan for our region, because we're in a regional area and that's what the state rules say, that regional scenario plan that gets developed and kind of agreed upon by that advisory committee of different policy setters in the different communities, that will be up to city council at a future date. Whenever that gets to that point, the expectation would be that we, as a city, would also adopt that scenario plan. Does that help at all? I mean, I don't know. It's kind of amorphous at this point. So, yeah.
Any questions on that, the CFEC planning? Also, want to, and I'll go to Counselor Christopher, our planning commission's already, also been doing work on a parallel piece on the CFEC planning, that was the climate-friendly areas, which is kind of separate, but kind of not? Is that right?
Yeah, and well, and I still think there's another slide, because I know it's listed on the list.
Okay. Press pause a little bit.
But, yeah, there is a few different things with climate-friendly areas, scenario planning, there's a, okay. Yeah, we can talk about that more. I can kind of give you a little bit of a laundry list of work we've done, work that we're doing, work that's in process.
And if anybody's wondering why we're doing all this, is because it was ordered under an executive order from the governor, the City of Kaiser, Marion County and other jurisdictions, led by the City of Springfield, appealed that, saying that this kind of work should be mandated legislatively, not through executive order, and we lost it to the Supreme Court. So we are obligated here. The other two large metro areas, Portland was mandated to do this from the outset back in, oh, eight, nine, something like that. And then Eugene Springfield had to do scenario planning that they didn't have to adopt, but I think they now have, they've done so since then.
Yeah, I think they're.
Our area managed to avoid it until now. Something like that?
Yeah, I think Eugene Springfield chose to.
Yeah, they did.
And so now, the, but I know, right now, you've got Rogue Valley, you've got us, you've got Eugene Springfield, you've got, I think, Albany-Cravallis area. There's, there's basically a schedule that everybody is going through, and we were in the first cut, because we're one of the larger metropolitan areas when you put us all together.
Yeah, we're second-largest metro area in Oregon.
Metro's, Metro's just a whole different animal altogether. It has its own set of OARs that apply only to Metro, because they already have a governance structure in place and things like that, so.
Counselor Christopher, you got a question?
Oh, you're going back to this later in the list.
Oh, yeah, we'll get to the climate-friendly areas. Is that what your question is?
My question was, it says CFEC implementation if it stands. I wanted to know the if it stands part.
It stands.
But that was, because we lost.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's what I thought.
That was litigation.
Yeah.
So it stood.
It stood.
Yeah. I think when the goals were being set on this one, when it was added in, it was still that question mark. So, do you want to just jump to it and just do it? Okay.
Yeah, I just jumped there. The first bullet is, it's not going away.
Yeah.
Mr. Witham's right. At the time we did the planning, it was if it stands. The answer is now is it stood.
It stood. Yep. So here we are.
That's right.
Okay.
But yeah, if we, if you want, just really quick, because I know you had some other questions, but just real quick, high level on the CFEC stuff, there is, it is, it's complicated. You have the scenario planning piece, which is basically looking at our region and imagining what that region's going to function like 20 years from now. There's, in the executive order, there's a requirement to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And how do you do that ultimately? Specifically, reduce the greenhouse gas emissions being produced by light motor vehicles. So there's the state transportation strategy that kind of has its own things at the state level. The scenario plan basically looks at what we, as a region, can do at more the local level, through land use, through transportation, through things like eliminating parking requirements and things like that. So there's a whole, there's a whole bunch of things that kind of come into play here. And just a few things, it's not just the scenario planning. We've already been doing work on this, because the timeframes, even though Shane has requested extensions and gotten some of them, we haven't been able to extend deadlines on all of the elements that were baked into the OARs out of the governor's executive order. So just kind of as a report card, if you will, we completed our climate-friendly area study. We had to submit that by the end of last year. I think I gave it to him for a Christmas present, because that was around my deadline and I said, Merry Christmas, here's our study. We were able to obtain a no-cost IGA, so the state actually helped us pay for work to be done for us. Council of Governments provided technical support for us to do that work. Out of that, we've now moved into kind of phase two of the climate-friendly area studies. And that's basically designating some areas, and there's a whole bunch of metrics in the OARs themselves that say, you've got to plan for a certain amount of space and a certain amount of land, and they have to meet these requirements, and this is how many people you're going to have to be able to fit in there. Now, whether or not it really happens or not is irrelevant, it's a long-range planning thing. But the reality for us, and I love the last bullet point here, for our climate-friendly area study and the climate-friendly area work, the, one of the silver linings and the good pieces was that we had done work with our River Cherry overlay district and the Kaiser revitalization plan, which was adopted back in 2018. And we did that, frankly, as a community not really focused on greenhouse gas reduction. We were focused on our community and what our community wanted, and how we could provide additional opportunities for housing and jobs. And there's also a transportation element to that, which we kind of pinned until we update our TSP. But what we found, when we went through our study process for CFAs, is that our areas that we had designated in our revitalization plan work pretty well to qualify as CFAs. So we will have to make some changes to our zone code to implement these standards. There will be a slight increase in building height, a slight increase in minimum density requirements, the maximums still kind of fall in there. And that work is, like, right now, the council of governments is helping us, they did kind of like a code analysis light with the study. And then we were at Planning Commission, it's been several months ago, to kind of give an update on this project that we're moving forward now, which is into actual implementation phase. So we, I believe our deadline is June of 2026, that we have to have our codes up to date and compliant with, well, it's a slew of different OARs, I think it's OAR 660-12, maybe 335 or something like that, but specific to climate-friendly areas. So that's one piece. Scenario planning's another piece. The TSP will be another piece ultimately. And then just last week at council, I think it was last week at council, council approved a no-cost IGA, which is for work to do code audit and analysis and updates to implement the requirements of OAR 660-012-0330. Yay! But it has to do, again, with walkable mixed-use design standards that would apply, maybe some things like, you know, what are the minimum setbacks? And if buildings are up closer to the street, which we already do in certain areas of town, but we don't do citywide. So like, with that, I just got a kind of a draft code audit, and I'll be having a meeting with that consultant to kind of go through what they found and looking at our existing rules and where they already comply with the rules the state has created and where we may have to have changes. And so out of that, we will be going to Planning Commission and having public hearings as we identify the things that need to be changed to comply with those new OARs. So yes, my life is amazing. It's the most favorite thing that I get to spend my time doing, and thanks for asking.
And, you know, I put that last bullet in there, the City of Kaiser was doing this for the right reasons. Not because they were being compelled by the state, by some law, but because it was good for Kaiser. And I think that was insightful and unfortunately, others had to be compelled. But the council, city council, put us in a good position with the River Cherry overlay district to be, to make this a little less painful than it would have been otherwise.
Well, I think one of the other benefits also was the changing the zoning to all mixed use. So we didn't have all these different flavors of the month of different types of zoning, so it makes it easier for our property owners to be able to develop, redevelop, and get maximum benefit from privately-owned properties, to be able to do those projects. Now, 2020 happened, and, you know, the economy went in the dumper, but as we're coming back out of it, now we're starting to see projects happen, and I'm hoping that our simplification of the codes, I'm looking at Counselor Duran, who is far more conversant in this area than I am, that it will make it a little easier for developers and property owners to get a good use out of their, and good value out of their land along those corridors. Is that an accurate assessment to some degree, Counselor? All right. Thank you. All right. Good times. So if codification wasn't exciting enough, CFAC, we're going to be doing a lot of that. Woo-hoo!
Yeah. So the long-term goals take us back to urban growth boundary. It's one of the, the short-term goal was, let's talk about impacts on housing, unemployment, transportation, or employment, transportation. And we're going into that next phase of town hall discussions early this, in 2025. And then, we talked about also about communication strategy. It was brought up by the council about doing, I think, Council President Starr, about doing some sound polling, that, you know, I totally support that. And then a lot of tough council conversations and figuring out which, deciding on a direction and pursuing that direction, so. Lots to chew on between now and, I think, the goal-setting for a new council.
Counselor President Starr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do we have those, I noticed you said early 2025. Do you have those dates set yet, so that we have a target from which to kind of like work backwards from in information planning?
I have it, but that's something I'm glad to work on for you.
And the only reason I ask is just because, like, what, how's the information going to be structured that's going to be delivered? And, you know, what's the agenda going to look like? Is it going to be single topic? Those kind of convers-
Yes, and, I mean, I think this council has kind of set a new standard for communication that we want to adhere to, of giving the information out there early, often, before we engage with them. So we'll put something together with that in mind.
Early 2025 is in, like, two and a half weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess we'll have to, early might be-
It won't be in two and a half weeks.
Yeah. Counselor Christopher.
So, and when we're talking about the UGB conversations, I mean, I'm just confused, like, are we just going to throw this open and say, so what do y'all think? Because I don't think that's a good strategy. I think that we'd have to winnow it down and say, here's the options with a good explanation of each option. Is that what you're thinking? What are we going to do?
So, taking what we did as far as the work session, and maybe getting a little bit less, that was pretty detailed.
Yes, it was.
So we kind of want to maybe shorten into that, some constraining forces and some, or some positive forces, you know? Making, simplifying the issue, but then enough to have a healthy discussion about it, so.
Like, options with bullet points under each of those options, so that folks can understand them, and then ask what they want to do?
Yeah, so traditionally, it's a pros and cons, but also like to say constraining or restraining forces, but, yeah. Very simple, down to the bullets.
Yeah.
And y'all can help us-
Great.
Craft that discussion.
Yeah, I think it has to be a lot less detailed than the work session was, or we'll end up with a 23-page forward to a strategic plan.
I'm going to go to Counsel President Starr, and then Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Brown, what it, so I have seen other projects in the past where there's kind of a temporary domain, if you will, that's secured, and like, the only thing that goes on that domain page is information about the single topic, right? So, you know, I'm just making it up, I don't even know if it's available, Kaiser UGB project, or, you know, whatever that title might be. And then you have, I just think that would, having one repository place to put information, whether that's we're creating a single-page FAQ sheet, you know, and then we have a QR code that people can scan, and it takes them to that where the FAQs, and then it maybe can deal, detail out all of the different options and information. Just something where it's a one place to store it, rather than on our website where it might get buried in the news feed and different things like that. So I think that is a really helpful tool to be getting information out, and people know where they can get it.
Good suggestion, and, yeah, it's something simple to remember also.
Yeah, I don't know what that might look to-
Domain name.
GoDaddy might.
Yeah.
And on our- GoDaddy.com. Yeah, okay.
And we thought, on our website, there's been a lot of evolution, so I think we're going to get to that one here in a minute because of the skills of the staff we have, so I'm looking forward to what that looks like. Counselor Christopher.
I think that's exactly right. That's what I was looking for. That's a great idea, Council President. So if we got that out there, here's the FAQs, here's the options, for a couple of months and let people eat that, and then I think we could have a community conversation. I think that's a great idea.
Okay. So the development of the communication strategy, so we'll put, again, a pin in that for our goal-setting coming up.
Okay, good.
Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have a number of different topics that we want to discuss in different town halls. I'm wondering if it might be beneficial to have a town hall where, in one room, we discuss UGB, another one we discuss sidewalks, another one we discuss, and that way, when we have that meeting that same night, we have different experts, and we rotate the people into those three rooms or something. Just a thought. I guess I love meetings.
You know, that's kind of fun. That's interesting. I mean, if people come together and they feel like they're going to be able to contribute to a discussion, let's get their, well, I've got them, let's get their impression on three different subjects instead of one.
As long as they're kind of related, because if we're going to different places, I know different brains will go to different spaces. Anyway-
Yeah.
We'll put a pin in this, we'll be able to brainstorm what this looks like going into our planning for next year, understanding that we've got a pretty robust list, plus the annual meetings, and what you love, Counselor Kohler, but we also have annual work sessions that we'll be doing. We've added Neighbor Association and annual meeting now, which the last two years has been amazing. So we'll be talking about that in January, kind of putting together a framework, and then our, we will give recommendations, and staff will help us then create a plan for at least the first six months, if not the first year of our biennium. So let's go ahead, and I love the energy, love the creativity here, so, but let's go ahead and wrap this, our long-term goals up.
So I think, is the web, yeah, the website is the last thing. You saw some immediate changes to the mobile-friendly work that we did, and the appointed team was, been looking at some presentations over the last couple of weeks, expected to come to the executive leadership team to decide whether we want to stay with the current provider and use some of the more modern features, or if we've got a better product out there. And we'll also be kind of weighing the costs versus the benefits of features and stuff, so. And wanted to leave with a big thank you to council for these goals. They have provided direction for us for the last two years, and we've worked on those on top of the everyday services that we continue to provide, like save community, our streets, planning. So we appreciate your support and all the guidance, and look forward to working with you next year.
Okay. All right. I know this has been a lot of information. Thank you all very much for the conversation. We've got some good materials to use going into our goal-setting in January. Thank you to the current city council for the work over the last 10 years, working with our city staff members to, on the development and delivery on the short-term goals and progress in various forms on the long-term goals. And just want a huge thank you to everybody for that. And is there anything else, Mr. Brown?
I do. As uncomfortable as this is to say, I want to apologize for the comments made towards Council President Starr, and we have to maintain a higher professional standard.
Thank you. Anything further? All right. Thank you all very much. The time is 7:42. We are adjourned.